I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for August 21st, 2017. I'll call upon Councilmember Mark McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I request that the council and members of the audience join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristen Rush, if you want to do the roll call?
Here.
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 Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Okay, all presented and accounted for. We have the minutes of the July 31st and August 7th Arvada City Council meetings. Are there any changes? Nancy Ford.
Yes, Mayor, on page three, under B resolutions.
Of which minutes?
August 7th.
Okay.
This was for the motion for an amendment on R 17-079. Those voting no should be Williams, Allard, Marriott, and McGough. So Pfeiffer and Jones are in there.
Yep.
And they should be eliminated because they voted yes.
This is on B?
B1, under B1.
Right.
R 17-079, under the amendment, the motion for amendment, those voting yes were Pfeiffer, Ford, and Jones, and those voting no should be Williams, Allard, Marriott, and McGough.
Right, we can't let, this isn't Chicago, so Pfeiffer and Jones can't vote twice.
That's right.
Got it. Thank you for catching that. Any other changes? If not, the minutes will stand approved with that very good correction. Thank you. Next, we have proclamation for Colorado Cities and Towns Week, and Mr. Allard was going to do this, pretty graciously allowed me to do so. When it comes to, it's in the fifth year, Colorado Cities and Towns Week is part of an ongoing effort sponsored by the Colorado Municipal League to raise public awareness about the services that cities and towns perform and to educate the public on how municipal governments work. Municipal government is the level of government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. Through Colorado Cities and Towns Week, Colorado Municipal League hopes to heighten the public awareness of municipal government's role in enhancing their quality of life. And we've got several of us who have been involved with the Colorado Municipal League, and it's a very important organization to represent the cities and towns within the state of Colorado. And so it is my pleasure to be able to read the following proclamation. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas municipal government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public service and their benefits. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by municipal government in our lives. And whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Colorado that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado. Hereby recognizes the week of September 11th through the 17th, 2017, as Colorado Cities and Towns Week and encourages all to actively participate, dated this 21st day of August 2017, signed by all members of the city council. And we will present that to the Colorado Municipal League for their information as well. Next, we have public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda, and I'll start with, is it Carolyn Armstrong?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Armstrong.
Carolyn.
I'm with the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, and I wanted to give you a brief update on what's going on with the committee. But before I do, so I wanted to say a big thank you to city staff and everybody for the wonderful volunteer luncheon last weekend. It was really great to have that kudos and recognition for all of the volunteers for the city, and it was noticed, and it gives us additional drive to do great things for the city. So, thank you. On behalf of the Sustainability Committee, just a couple of quick updates. The first is that we're excited that we just got our initial data about the updated greenhouse gas inventory for the city of Arvada. We're looking to offer energy goal recommendations later this year, early next year, once that data is finalized. It's going to parallel beautifully with the national conversation going on about energy use and where our goals are as a city. Second, though, and the primary reason I'm up here is to give you an update on the recycling education initiative that the Sustainability Committee has been working on. We had the opportunity to interact with well over 150 residents at the Arvada on Top Festival on July 22nd, and we were really pleasantly surprised by how engaged and interested Arvada citizens were about recycling and about the issues going on about waste diversion in the city. Over 150 residents signed a letter to council expressing interest in Arvada evaluating its waste recycling options. We're going to continue to do outreach at a couple additional events this year before we provide you with that letter that everybody has expressed interest and value in. But we're really excited about the passion that people have been portraying about recycling and reducing the number of trash trucks on our street and saving the city some money in our, in our street costs. And also, we'd heard some really interesting information from people living in apartments who are frustrated that they can't recycle as a part of their, as a part of their apartments. But I was really excited to get the opportunity to talk to people who don't recycle and talk about why and talk about some of the interesting facts about recycling in Arvada, and they, we're really receptive. And so I think that our education campaign is going to really help inform the city residents to make informed decisions going forward. So, once we finish our education outreach campaign, we will be providing you a letter in the interim. You'll continue to see us at events, talking to residents, and hopefully getting great feedback about what interests Arvada in about recycling.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. My name is Steve Teetz. I live in Greeley, Colorado. You probably wonder why I'm down here. Visiting my family. First of all, the park, it used to be Jeff Coe Park. It looks like you did a beautiful job extending the park, and I was just really surprised. About two years ago, I was visiting my sister, and I know she was in the middle of it. Also, I guess a concern I do have is about actually two things, is first of all, I understand you have the Gold Line. It was, it's been in the news, but anyway, the Gold Line is not working or whatever, they're not using it. And I was wondering why, I know I should probably be asking RTD, but since it goes through Arvada, I was just wondering why it's not running yet. And my other concern is the, the traffic down where Walmart is, even though I personally was against it, even though I don't live here, but I grew up here, and it has changed quite a bit since I was young. But I just want to, you know, I know Arvada is growing, but I was just wondering too, that I know some apartments sometimes, especially in that triangle, about between 52nd and 58th Avenue, that you have a lot of businesses and buildings and all that, and that's a lot of, that's another place that's, the traffic is really horrible. And I was just, I guess maybe planning for the future, maybe we need to think of traffic. Thank you very much.
You bet, sir. Sir, since you are from Greeley, and it's not going to be as easy to get back to you. Normally, we don't respond to questions, but with regard to the Gold Line, that's because of the problems that they continue to have with the A-line, with the crossing gates. Until they get those worked out, the Federal Railway Administration will not allow testing to continue on the Gold Line for the timing of our gates. And once we get the go-ahead, we've got about 60 days of testing that'll still have to be done before they can open for fair service. Thank you.
Would it be easier to get?
Yeah. Okay, next, Joe Burns.
Good evening, city council, staff, and guests. I'm Joe Burns, and I'm the current chair for the A-PAC Committee, the Park Advisory Committee. I wanted to share some updates with you about our recent field trip throughout Arvada to several of our east side parks. We visited Tennyson Knolls and assisted Mike Lee with a $20,000 grant application to Adams County. We also worked on, have visited the Columbine Park and took Mike McDonnell with us so we could learn a little bit more about the nature and the atmosphere of that park, as well as how we as A-PAC members can fill out assessment forms to help them learn about more what's happening in the park when their maintenance folks aren't there. We also visited Stocky Walker Park, one of our newest parks in Arvada, and noticed how incredibly difficult it was for the public to find their way there, even for us as A-PAC members. Great new little park, difficult to find. We also visited the Bike Training Center and noticed that it's fabulous, but a lot of people mentioned that they didn't know what it was and could they use it. The Four Acre Park, Tomlinson Park, as well as the new location for Health and Wellness, the Health and Wellness Park over at Red Rocks Community College. We also visited Rawlston Central Park and talked to some of the folks who were waiting and holding places for their parties that were coming later, and they expressed some challenges with us about ways we might be able to do that differently. And then we concluded our, concluded our field trip and by visiting the Arvada Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon with 12 of our folks being there. In June, the A-PAC attended the Britton Park Tree, Tree Planting, planted 12 new trees in Britton Park along with their community group, as well as we wrote the grant through Jefferson County Public Health Quick Wins Program and were awarded $2,000 to be able to do that. It was a group effort of individuals from A-PAC, the city, and as well as the Britton Community Program writing that grant together. We also are proud to share that our A-PAC Junior Ranger Program is actually involved and part of the Jeff Coe, the whole entire name of it, the Be Wild Jeff Coe Inspire Grant through Great Outdoors Colorado. They're part of the larger grant, and it's focused, the, the A-PAC Junior Ranger Program is focused on helping expose kids to parks, trails, open space, and activities related to nature and the outdoors. We're excited to be sharing, that our group will be sharing with the Inspire, Go Co Inspire crew on September 7th for hopefully approval for that grant, and a lot of great opportunity through Fitzsimmons Elementary School and the new recreation center there. Just wanted to let you know, we're still busy, we're still active, and still excited to be working with the Parks Committee.
It's a great, great committee.
Oh, sorry.
So obviously, we should work on some wayfinding signs to Stocky Walter Park and perhaps get some more information out particularly about the bike training park over by Costco there. Good. And all the rest of the parks are great, so.
Okay.
Yep, it was great to see you all at the Volunteer Appreciation Luncheon. Next, I'll call on Stephen Williams.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. My purpose is to ask that you have the Arvada Police to enforce the city's noise ordinance. Having lived in Denver for almost 40 years, I know what noise is. I moved to Arvada in October 2016 and have a love-hate relationship with you. There is an issue with vehicle exhaust systems, mostly those that have been modified to admit very loud noise, and noisy motorcycle operators, those without mufflers and the newer rocket bikes that can be driven very noisily also. Earlier this year, both Golden and Greeley have begun more strictly enforcement of their noise ordinances, and I brought a copy of the article from the Denver Post that addresses the Greeley enforcement. Both cities were addressing the quality of life issue for their citizens having to listen to these extremely loud noises that come from vehicles with modified exhaust systems. I would invite any of the council to visit my home and listen to the barrage of noise that I hear on a daily basis, mostly during rush hours and early evenings, though on some weekends, the drivers continue to make the noise until as late as 11:00 PM. I can even supply you with the license number of one particularly obnoxious driver who revs his engines extra loudly going through the intersection of Carr Street and Club Crest Drive, both mornings and evenings daily, and through on and off during the weekends. I urge you to request that the police enforce the noise ordinance through our neighborhood's sake. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. I've shared your article with the rest of council. Thank you for making copies. We'll have our city manager discuss the matter with the police chief, and we'll get back to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor. My name is Sheri Whistle, and I live at 13660 West 59th Drive in Arvada. Arvada for All the People, a grassroots group of Arvada citizens, is hosting a public event on Thursday, September 7th, at the Arvada Library. The event is titled "Let's Talk Arvada: Urban Renewal, What You Need to Know." The objective of this event is to educate citizens of Arvada on urban renewal in our city. The proposed format includes Bob Dyer, the former Arvadi, Arvada City Council member as a moderator, a 15-minute presentation from the Ora Board, a 15-minute presentation from Protect Arvada Taxpayers, and finally, an opportunity for Arvada citizens to ask questions and to receive answers from the Arvada Urban Renewal Board. An invite was extended to Fred Jacobson, Chair of the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners, and unfortunately, Mr. Jacobson, Chair, declined the invite citing the sponsor, Let's Talk Arvada. In his written response, Mr. Jacobson said, and I quote, "has led me to believe that this is not a genuine request for an open-minded conversation regarding urban renewal in Arvada. As a member of Let's Talk Arvada, I can confirm that this is a genuine request for an open-minded educational event. The event is for and by the citizens of Arvada to hear facts regarding urban renewal in our city. It also avails citizens the opportunity to ask questions and hear answers from the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners. It is important to note that the members of the Arvada Urban Renewal Board of Commissioners are appointed by the Arvada City Mayor. The Arvada Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners is accountable to the mayor and therefore accountable to the citizens of Arvada. I am here tonight to ask you, Mayor, and Arvada City Council, as elected representatives of the citizens of Arvada, to encourage the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners to present at the September 7th Urban Renewal Event. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got a few items on new business. First is the consent agenda. We have R 17-082, a resolution approving a funding agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Cimarron Development Company to fund a professional services agreement pertaining to a market update report for the Candelas Development. Next is R 17-083, a resolution approving an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Thomas G. Thibidou for professional services pertaining to a market update report for the Candelas Development in an amount not to exceed $98,250. Next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and TerraCon Consultants, Inc., in the amount of $150,000 for professional testing services. The fourth one is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a blanket purchase order in the amount of $600,000 with Hill Petroleum for the purchase of fuel and fuel delivery services. Fifth one's a resolution authorizing the assignment of the city of Arvada's private activity bond allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. And finally, is R 17-087, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Axis Business Technologies in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for audiovisual systems installation. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that resolutions R 17-082 through R 17-087 be approved.
Motion's for approval of the consent agenda. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, first readings. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that Council Bill 17-026, an ordinance rezoning certain lands within the city of Arvada. The residents at Allison Park from city of Arvada are I, one and two family residents. It's PUDR, Planned Unit Development Residential, 11.8 dwelling units per acre, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado, 5219 Allison Street. Public hearing to be set for September 18, 2017, at 6:30 PM.
Motion's for approval on first reading. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. It's not quite 6:30, so we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Pfeiffer.
All right. Well, I guess I just want to bring up the volunteers luncheon. I guess I'll go ahead and chime in on there.
Sure.
It was a great, I think we had about 300 people show up there, and I think that that was a great honor to recognize all of the volunteers that helped make our quality of life here in the city of Arvada special, and thank you, Mayor, for opening us up and doing your opening remarks. And then myself, John, and Nancy were superheroes for today, so we have a pretty good picture. I'm thinking Mark will put it out in social media, so a little fun with the pictures. And then I just want to say, because today's a special day for my twin boys who turned 10 today during the eclipse, I said you blew out the biggest candle you can have. So they turned 10 today, and I just want to wish them a very special happy birthday.
That's great.
As I have.
Good. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to make a little report about the volunteers luncheon. I think it's always a great event, probably the ones I look forward to the most. I always come back to this, Arvada has such an embarrassment of riches when it comes to a volunteer spirit and volunteer talent. I know other cities at times have a hard time getting volunteers to perform the various functions. Arvada does not. Not only do we have sufficient volunteers, we have more than enough, and the amount of effort and talent that these people put into volunteering for all of us in the community is really stunning. A luncheon doesn't go anywhere near far enough to thank them, but it's the best way we, we know how, and it was great seeing everybody there, and I want to say thank you and congratulations to all the volunteers who volunteer in our city and make it a better place.
Good. Nancy Ford.
Well, John and I had the opportunity to visit the Arvada gardeners on Saturday when they were celebrating their golden jubilee, and it is certainly a beautiful garden, and I think they are a perfect example of, of our wonderful volunteers in Arvada because they have done a tremendous job to beautify that garden. They have a new orchard, and they have this wonderful orange apple tree that I think few communities have. It was specially grafted for us. And it was just really nice to see the garden, and they seem to be really excited, so it was a good, it was a good morning.
That's great. We had a report from city manager that our coordinating committee met involving the Apex Board and the school district regarding the issue of Myers Pool. And I think, Mr. Devon, you were looking for some guidance from us as to how we should move forward on that issue, if you want to speak to that a little bit.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I went to the council. The meeting that we had, which was a two-by-two-by-two meeting, two, our two council representatives to the Apex Park District, councilmembers Allard and McGough, also met with Brad Rupert and Ally LaSalle of the school board, and Jeff Glenn and Tommy School of the Apex Board. And the direction from our two council member representatives was that the city council should authorize me through a motion to continue working on finding solutions for the replacement of Myers Pool. They wanted, the intent was to make sure that the direction, councilmembers McGough and Allard definitely support our continued work in this area to find solutions in collaboration with the other two agencies for the replacement of Myers Pool, but they wanted to make sure that I would go forward with that work with the entire city council's support. So the idea would be that we would ask the city council for a motion to direct me to continue working on this matter and finding solutions and bringing them forward for further discussion and deliberation.
Yes, as we know, Myers Pool is one of, what, four in the metropolitan area that's a legitimate Olympic-sized pool for training. It's the only one up in the northwest quadrant of the municipality, and it is unfortunately past its useful life. We know we can squeeze a little bit more out of it, but it's a problem that I don't think we can ignore. Mr. Allard?
I simply wanted to add that the idea of this project and authorizing the manager to get involved in it is cooperation, particularly with the possibility, or possible funding source, with the school district and the Apex Parks and Recreation District in the city. And it, it's going to be a substantial cost involved, but I think it's very, very important that the city maintain and maintain this pool. It's very, very important, particularly for the schools and the, and the regional value of the, of the pool. And so the idea was that rather than have the, this would be a complicated study and evaluation by the manager, as well as the board in the Apex District, and simply felt that rather than have the manager spend a lot of time and the council not understand what was, what was going to be happening, which may be nothing, that we direct the manager to proceed with the necessary work to determine the feasibility of funding a new pool.
Very good. Mr. McGough?
Yes, I would just add that the, the three parties at the meeting, the city of Arvada is the owner of Myers Pool, the Apex Recreation District is the operator of the pool, and the school district is the biggest user of the pool. Therefore, it's appropriate that all three entities be involved in plans for the replacement of that, of the pool building, which is certainly, it's a necessity within the next few years.
And the, as I understand it, the current cost estimates to replace it are in the ballpark of $30 million?
That's correct. To do a replacement of that facility as a 50-meter indoor pool would be about $31.5, I think, million dollars.
Okay. Well, we've certainly enjoyed the excess, the success of a good working relationship with the Apex District and the school district, as evidenced by the recent groundbreaking for this Fitz Morris Pool and Recreation Facility. I think we should follow that model. I recall a recent Comcast interview of Mr. Marriott on that very topic in terms of partnerships. It's certainly something that none of us could do alone, and so I think we have to explore frankly those partnerships, and then also whether or not there's some private sector opportunities in terms of naming rights or other entities. Maybe Missy Franklin wants to give back to her metropolitan area a little bit, and we can look to her contacts. we can look to her contacts in terms of some places to possibly look for some money. So, Mr. Devon, are you requesting a motion to give you authority to continue discussions?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I would entertain such a motion from someone. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that city council authorize Mr. Mark Devon, our city manager, to proceed with the conversations and enter in the cooperation with the school district and the Apex Park and Recreation District to evaluate the feasibility of the Myers Pool.
Okay, any questions? Motion for authorization, all votes cast. Not surprisingly, that passes seven to zero. Mr. Devon, we've just added something else to your plate. Congratulations. It's an important project, and I appreciate the coordinating committee working on this and wanting to bring it back to city council for further discussion and direction. Okay, with that, we have now reached the six-thirty hour. I'll open the council bill, the public hearing on Council Bill 1702-4, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter forty-two of the Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code through adoption by reference of the 2015 International Fire Code published by the International Code Council and establishing penalties for violation thereof. Should we do these two separately, Mr. Daly? Okay, very good. Mr. Devon?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to represent the council. We have Chief Building Official, Burt Van Horn, who will make this presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm going to actually, if it's okay with you, do the presentation and give you an overview of both of these ordinances, if that's all right?
Well, is that okay?
Okay.
But don't open the public hearing on the second one yet?
Okay.
Okay.
They kind of dovetail together, the appropriate word dovetail, together for purposes of discussion because they do, they are a family of codes, so we want to just talk about them together. We got the helper here. So I wanted to let you know, and I've been in front of you before in a study session to talk about this. It was some time ago. In fact, I think it was the first study session that was broadcast on television. So that tells you some how long it's been. It's been quite a while, but the information is going to be pretty much the same. We haven't done a lot of significant changes. We've done a lot of cleanup and other things. So I just want to remind you again that, you know, this kind of process of going through a large volume of technical code books with our building code advisory board and other interested parties like the Home Builders Association, staff members, even we've had energy code experts, general public, has been a significant project. I think we probably had over a dozen meetings that lasted, you know, two or three or four hours each over the course of the last year and a half. So it's been an enormous undertaking, but it's been done to make sure that we're recommending to you approval of changes to an ordinance that are either small in nature or make the ordinance clearer or cleaner or consistent with other jurisdictions or provide additional safety measures for people who are living and working and residing in buildings here in the city of Arvada. So we've tried to make it as minimal and common sense as possible. So we've had a significant input of people through this process. So some of the highlights, and we've covered some of these things as well, but I just want to, you know, reiterate that, again, even though there is, in the code books as they're written, there is a requirement for sprinkler systems to be added to single-family homes. We have again requested or recommended that that be taken out of the code. It's maybe a little, you know, it's an optional thing for people who are interested in that. We might be a little ahead of schedule as far as infrastructure and thinking through the process if we ever want to go that direction, but at this point, we're recommending that that is struck from the code book via an ordinance amendment. We are also not recommending any changes to the International Property Maintenance Code, which is something that is enforced and managed by the police department now. And so if they have an interest in making changes to that code book, even though it's part of the family of codes, then we will let them decide with their advisory boards and with you what direction to take with that. There is one of the main changes that we're proposing this year, and it's consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing in the area and across the nation, also with recommendations from Department of Energy and some other groups, is to increase the Energy Conservation Code requirements, which basically increases the efficiency of appliances, furnaces, water heaters, increases the insulation values in buildings that are being constructed or significantly altered or added on to at this point, and lowering, you know, the cost of operation over time for the owners and occupants of those buildings. We are also, we've had an amendment on the books for quite a while that relates to options for egress window requirements for basements and things like that. And a little bit different this time around is that the code has actually incorporated some options for people who have existing buildings or existing homes, and they want to do basement finish projects, and has mirrored some of what was included in our ordinance prior that was custom for us. And so now we've taken the opportunity to say that's a reasonable adjustment or a reasonable change to the, to our ordinance to strike our portion and let the code book just stand as is because it gives people options for not having to meet the strict requirements of egress requirements for basement finishes and things like that. So simplifying the ordinance. We always like simplifying. Another thing we've also done in similar fashion is that we used to have a actual ordinance that dealt with radio amplification for buildings, and what that is, is a testing and boosting of signals so first responders can actually use their radios to signal out of buildings or to call out of buildings in emergencies. So some buildings, especially depending on the size and what they're made of, and if they're sometimes energy-efficient components, affect the radio signals. Also, there's a lot of issues with potential interference of different systems, but basically if a first responder can't call out of a building, there needs to be a booster system that allows that radio to be amplified to reach out in case they need help or need assistance within the building, something that's been on the books for a while. What we're proposing is just to get rid of our custom ordinance and go with the national recommendations, which are very similar, probably slightly less restrictive than what our ordinance was, but still function and still allow that signal to reach out, and it's been vetted by our IT department, the fire department, and other first responders, our police department also. So we've thought that one through quite well. We've spent a lot of time on that specifically, aside from just the appeals or our advisory board process. Of course, we coordinate with other departments. We have engineering, planning department, fire department, any other department that may have some interaction. We've been coordinating with them and discussing specific issues. We are, like I said, going through and doing cleanup. We've had some discrepancies or, it's probably not the right word, but we've had some items in our ordinance that maybe were either redundant or had conflict with what the book was asking for and vice versa, so we've tried to clean those up and streamline without really making any substantive changes to those, to the, to the actual requirements. We've just made it cleaner and easier to read and find the requirements. We've also, if we had an ordinance that was appropriate for us that we've had in our old version, we've carried that over. We haven't made a lot of changes in that regard, so we've tried to keep it as streamlined and as similar to what we had on the books before with this ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry, back up one. A couple of things, and I know you're aware of this, with a couple of changes recently to the organization of Code Enforcement Department going into the police department, we've had to make an interim change between the first reading and now, just to clarify definition in the, in the ordinance. So we want to have, we'd like you to possibly tonight make a modification to change the wording of Neighborhood Services Manager to the Police Chief and his designees, which will make more sense with the actual operation of the department as we have it structured. And we've also done some renumbering in the fire code, and so we just need to repoint a couple of definitions in the fire code as well. One is for the stage-one fire restrictions, and the other is for stage-two fire ban, and those repointings are noted. I think you guys have that in front of you as well. So I tried to keep it short and somewhat sweet. It's very technical, so it's hard to be thorough and brief at the same time, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Very good. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council on the first item, Council Bill 1702-4, which is repealing and reenacting the Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code portions? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Marriott, you're first.
I just have a question. Is the egress window part of this contained within the fire code's part of it, or is it contained within the building code's part?
It's actually in the building code's part, and in particular, it's in the residential code.
Okay, so I'll hold my question until we get to that, to that item. And if there are no other questions, I would make a motion.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I have similar questions. I don't know which code it sits in, but generically, did the previous changes that was made kind of stay with, other than what you've mentioned? In other words, we've made some edits over the years, and I'd hate to lose those edits without clear linkage that why we made those changes.
We're proposing, aside from the egress window requirements that have now been dealt with by having a more flexible section in the code book, I'm trying to think through the, as much as, as much as possible, we have kept the amendments from the previous ordinances and carried them through unless there was something that was either equivalent that was in the book, so we didn't have to keep making a larger and larger ordinance. We've tried as much as possible to be consistent with what we've been doing and taking the changes in the code book, and the little tweaks here and there, wording and things like that, we, you know, not bringing every word change to you tonight, obviously, but keeping consistent with what we've been doing, so there's less major change in that regard. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the, all, every whatever, four years, we go through this, and it's very painful, and a lot of people look at this.
Yes.
That we don't forget the differences and the variances we've made on this codes to be unique to us versus following the international codes.
We, we stay, we've stayed unique to the things we've been doing for a long time, as much as possible, unless there's something that makes sense to incorporate because it's so similar that it would be silly to re-modify it.
That works. And then it might be in this discussion or if it's in the next one, distance between residential homes, is that discussed in the fire at all, or is it just in the building?
The what of?
Distance, because I believe there's like a six-foot separate, from the, from the property line or something to that effect.
It's covered under the IRC, which is the next.
Then I'll wait till then as well.
Okay. Then, Mr. Marriott, you may make your motion.
Okay. Thank you. I move that Council Bill 17-02-4, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter forty-two, Fire Prevention and Protection of the city of Arvada, of the Arvada City Code through adoption by reference of the 2015 International Fire Code published by the International Code Council and establishing penalties for violation thereof, be approved on final reading, numbered forty-six oh-two, and ordered published in full.
I just want to make sure that the record's clear on this, and this includes the modifications that were outlined in the presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, correct, including the modifications outlined in the presentation.
Thank you.
Motion for approval with the stated modifications. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1702-5, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter eighteen, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code through the adoption of general and administrative provisions and the adoption by reference of the 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Residential Code, the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2015 International Existing Building Code, the 2015 International Fuel Gas Code, and the 2015 International Mechanical Code, the 2015 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2014 National Electrical Code, and the adoption of penalties for violations thereof. Is there any additional presentation on this? Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and Mr. Marriott, you're first.
Thank you. So you mentioned in the presentation egress window options to remodels of existing homes, and I just wonder if you can expand on that a little bit? Tell us what Arvada's action was previously, and then what changes were made to the code that kind of make those things equate.
So previously, we had kind of a long history of changes to the egress window provisions, up to and including requiring no egress windows in a basement that was remodeled, actually finished for the first time from being unfinished and for a certain duration of time because we kind of had a history of different ordinance amendments, and it was very, it's very hard to manage because we always had to look back and see exactly what timeframe we were dealing with as far as when was this built originally and when were these changes made. The new provisions that are actually built into the code book do something very similar. They say if you have an existing basement that's finished, you're not making significant changes, then you don't necessarily have to bring the building up to the current requirements for egress windows. If you are going to add on and build a bigger basement by adding on, you know, to the home, you put bedrooms down there for the first time, those would need to have egress windows because you're going through the construction process from scratch, and so it's more of a common sense way to allow people to make some modifications without going to the strictest version of having to put in egress windows for every scenario in a basement.
Okay.
That's kind of a Cliff Notes.
That's kind of the Cliff Notes version, and is it, in your opinion, does it give as much flexibility as our previous actions had given to a property owner who's either wanting to finish their basement or wanting to keep their finished basement?
My feeling is it gives similar flexibility with a lot better ability for consistency and enforcement over time, which I think is important because, you know, there's a, there's a point where you, you don't want to make errors going back and interpreting things incorrectly and, you know, creating a problem where you're maybe not enforcing something the way it should be over time, and so this gives us a way forward that gives all that flexibility without having to worry about exactly when something was built in relation to an ordinance change, and so that helps. And so I don't know if you can correlate them exactly, but it does give quite a lot of flexibility now for existing homes, whereas the old versions didn't have any. If you touched anything in your basement, basically, you'd be subject to some modification. That's the way the code was written, and then we had modified it based on time, which was very hard to manage.
Okay, okay. One other quick question. With the flexibility or the options of flexibility that are built in, are those, you know, like waivers that the chief building official or their designee gives, or is it, or are they rights to waivers or rights to different actions based on the situation and it's expressed within the code? So is it, is it flexibility by the staff, or is it, or is it a different writing of those regulations?
It's actually flex, well, there's two different versions of flexibility in any building code, but one is, the way it's written gives it flexibility in the code itself without interpretation. So it says, you know, when you, if you're only doing this, then you don't have to update anything. If you're doing up to a certain level, then you have to consider partial changes. The code also, in the administrative section, all of the codes give us ability to work with people to establish equivalencies or, you know, equivalent methods or materials that meet the intent. So we always have that flexibility, and we try to utilize that to our advantage when it's appropriate, and probably I tend to be a little bit more in favor of that because it's not perfect. You know, construction is, you're, everything is so different depending on the project, so it's an important thing to utilize to try to give people the most options possible. And then we have the appeals process as well, which gives them even additional options.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
Can we expand on that, just on a use case, just so I make sure I understand?
Mm-hmm.
Because this was, this was a big debate. It was actually on my list as well, I think, for a dozen years. And so if somebody has, when you, there was a debate about what the size of these windows, these egress windows. If there's a window that is accessible, is there still a rule about what size? In other words, if it's like a, I'm thinking a far horizons area where they do have some small windows in the basement, would we require those folks to dig out those windows and put in thirty-six-inch wide big windows? in 36-inch wide big windows if they were doing a partial remodel or remodel?
So depending on what threshold you meet as, as far as, you know, if you're making minor changes, or are you adding on an additional basement area and make adding bedrooms that weren't there before, depending on what threshold you meet, if you need an egress window, that size, and that, that size is not changing, but it is possibly bigger than what you're working with. So there is the possibility that if you.
I should say it's within.
Exceed the threshold, and you want to put a bedroom here, and because you've exceeded the threshold and you're completely revamping the entire space, that's where you need your window because that's where your bedroom is, then it's possible that the little window you have because of the choice of layout has to be enlarged. So it, there's so many, there's so many scenarios.
Okay.
That it's possible, yes, that a small window would have to be enlarged, but it usually would be, it would have to meet a certain change threshold first, and then you would have to, in your layout, decide to put it where that little window exists versus giving yourself options in another area of the, of the space. So that, you know, part of it is design and figuring out what the best design is to incorporate the least amount of cost in your, in your.
Well, and I think you answered the question with waivers and so forth that John was saying, I just, I don't want to get into it to, I think before, some of the argument before was, well, the firefighters need a way out, and, you know, at least my discussion with Chief Greer is a firefighter will never use an egress window, ever. It would be better to fireproof your stairs than try to use an egress window when they have their gear on for a firefighter. So I just, you know, I just want to make sure.
I can't necessarily speak to the use by firefighters, Kevin Ferry from the Fire Department is here and could answer that question.
Yeah, because at one point, we were talking about egress, had to be big enough for a firefighter to go through, and.
Yeah.
You know, Greer's told me that we would, they would never use a window, it's not.
I remember that conversation, yes.
I just, I just don't want us to put on a burden on, on somebody saying, well, now you got a little window, but, you know, firefighters need out, so you now need to do a six-foot window by three feet deep, and, you know, I just want to make sure we don't go into some undue costs, and if there's a way to get waivers and so forth, then.
Yeah, I mean, what we found is, and in my discussions with Kevin, is that firefighting methods or best practices change over time, and there's a lot of things that, that used to be done on a regular basis that they don't do anymore because of the way, you know.
So the best thing you could do is just put the fireproof drywall around your stairs, and that's the best thing you can do for the firefighters.
That is, that is one of the requirements, actually.
All right, good. And the second question I had, so going back to what I asked earlier, was what is the separation between two residential buildings? Because I know they get closer and closer and closer. And in light of, I'm looking to him because it was right down the street, when they had the fire with the high winds out at Light and Rock, you know, what's their, six-foot separation, something like that? How are we addressing that now, and did fire weigh into that?
It's another multi-pronged question, but if, if you want to put buildings next to each other without any fire protection built into the building itself, you would be five feet from a property line and five feet from a property line, so you'd be at 10 feet between the buildings, in theory. When you do that, there are some requirements for protecting overhangs with drywall and some other things you probably don't want to get into. But conceivably, you can also build buildings up to zero feet from each other, as long as they are fire-protected, from each other with some sort of firewall, the.
But that would be multi-dwelling, right, multi-family kind of, like duplexes.
It could be a duplex.
Fourplex, but just talk about single-family homes. I mean, they just seem to get closer and closer and closer.
Right.
And in light of that last fire, I was wondering if, did we adjust that, or are we still sticking with the five feet from property line?
Well, we're sticking, for the building code purposes, five feet. Now, there are other requirements that may be in excess of that based on the zoning ordinance and the zoning district and some other things covered in the UDC, so those are kind of two separate issues, but for fire purposes, it would be five feet to the property line for each building, so 10 feet without any protection except possibly overhangs. And then, of course, if you want to not protect the overhangs, you'd have to get five feet to the overhang without any kind of protection at all.
You know, Mark, this would be an interesting discussion because I think our land development code seems to be different because that's five feet so close, but then yet we can put a two-story house five feet from a property line, but when they, you know, change a property, it seems like we worry about the solar and, you know, the whole shadowing effect, and there's a plane and all this other fancy stuff we talk about. I'd like to, I think, I think it'd be good for Council to understand how the codes and land development, when we have that meeting, kind of all play with each other, because in some aspects, it almost seems that they can contradict each other or conflict with each other, shouldn't say contradict, but conflict with each other. And then how do we, how do you resolve those would be interesting for, for that discussion. But you did bring up a good point, because, I mean, you're right, our zoning can say something different.
Yeah, and sometimes if the building code would require five feet, but the zoning ordinance requires 10, then five feet becomes moot, you know, so.
Yeah, because the zone says, yeah.
And if it's allowed to be zero lot line or townhome type construction or single-family attached, which are basically a type of townhome, that's where that higher fire rating between the units comes into play, and there's a couple of options for how they do that.
And so when they are that close, this is my last question, so when they are that close, there is some fire protection that does have to be put into the walls or whatever on the material they use, okay?
There is, and the roof as well.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy Ford.
I just want to ask, in terms of the egress windows, are they required in new construction for the basement?
They are, they are required in new construction.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions, I'm ready for a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 17-02-5, An Ordinance Repealing and Reenacting Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Arvada City Code through the adoption of general and administrative provisions and the adoption by reference of the 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Residential Code, the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, the 2015 International Existing Building Code, the 2015 International Fuel Gas Code, the 2015 International Mechanical Code, the 2015 International Plumbing Code, the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, the 2014 National Electric Code, and the adoption of penalties for violations thereof, as well as the minor modifications made so within the presentation, all be approved on final reading, numbered 4603, and ordered published in full.
Motion for approval with the modifications? All votes cast. That passes seven to zero, thank you. That concludes our.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your work on this, and certainly pass it on to our Building Code Advisory Board and the other groups that were involved in the process for, for putting this all together for us. Okay, we've already heard reports from City Council. Folks can stick around and hear from Mr. Marriott about his trip to go to the, to the total eclipse part of Nebraska, but at this point, do we have any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that and move it on to Mr. Devon for review of future workshops and presentations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, we're going to have a workshop next Monday, going to get an update from the Arvada Center on the Arvada Center Arts and Ales Festival. We will be hearing from Community Development on the Safe and Accessible Arvada Program. We'll get an update, second part of the discussion of the Arvada Events Master Plan, and then lastly, our Human Resources Department will provide a workforce planning update. That will be the agenda for the workshop next Monday.
Very good, thank you. Nothing from the City Attorney? We stand adjourned.